Hi Brad.
Hi Debbie. How are you tonight? Can you, can you hear me Debbie?
I can hear you now Brad.
Oh, okay. So how are you tonight?
Well, got the Mariners game on and waiting for the Kraken. Not too bad having a virtual meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's kinda nice, I guess. Well, it sure is a nice night out.
Yes. Sure did get warm fast.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody in my neighborhood's out mowing their lawns.
Jason, can you hear us?
I can't. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it looks like you're still at work.
I am.
Are you in as the moderator? So you can turn on the cameras?
No, no, it's already recording.
So this is odd. I just got a text message from Jeff Wilkins and he says that he only sees him and Grant at the meeting. Are they at a wrong meeting or something?
They must be.
Can we, can we send them something?
Debbie, did we send out a different link?
I sent out whatever link was on the agenda. The seven ones. Oh, I don't know what Chuck sent me.
They might be, let me check the agenda, because I think Chuck created a new meeting with a new link. Text them back and tell them we're figuring it out.
Okay.
Can you hear me Brad?
Yeah, I can.
Well, the meeting number they want to put in is 762-838-677.
Hold on a second. 762, go ahead.
838.
838.
677.
677. Okay.
Or do we want to jump over to the one they're on? Because are they on the standard one?
Well then, how did Brad get it? How come Brad's here and they're not? Does Brad have the same thing everybody else did?
Yeah, I just clicked on the link in the email that you sent me.
Oh, yeah, and if you click on the link in the, in the agenda, it's gonna pull up the other one. So if they clicked on the link in the agenda, they clicked on the wrong link. They needed to click on the link in the email. Okay. I hate this.
Why would Chuck give us a different number than what we already had?
I don't know, he's your boss.
I can't complain about him until I'm off probation.
Okay. So Debbie, let's, let's you and, you Brad and I switch over.
Oh.
Well, I think you just told them to move over and I was gonna send out an email.
I just told Jeff to move over.
Okay, send out an email to the other planning commissioners and we'll see what happens. I don't have any contact information.
I'm sending a text to Grant now.
They need to use the link that was in the email that Debbie sent out. Not the one on the agenda.
Okay.
Alright, we picked up Carrie.
Okay. I think Jeff found the new link too. I didn't hear back from Grant.
I was searching for it and found it. It popped through, Debbie's email popped through at the moment that I was trying to click on all the links. I was like, I can't get in.
Apparently there's two different links and Grant and Jeff both went to the wrong meeting.
Oh. Oops, you know what? Stuff happens.
Yeah. Just saw a bird fly over your sunroof.
I'm sitting in the Safeway parking lot in Cleelam.
Really? Oh wow.
I'm on my way back. Moving my kiddo home from college, from Pullman, so.
Oh wow.
I was like, oh, this is like, this is the only place I'm gonna get to stop, so I'm stopping.
I've made that drive many a time.
Oh, you know, this is our last one. He's graduated and done, so. Well, I'm kinda sad. I actually cried a little bit leaving Pullman today. I was like, I'm actually a little sad leaving Pullman.
Left Pullman driving a U-Haul truck. He and her friends finished up with the apartment. I had to move him back in because nobody would own up to driving a truck.
I, I have a U-Haul trailer attached to the back of my road.
Yep.
So where's your kid?
Uh, he actually doesn't come home until Sunday. He's gotta do deed on the apartment and stuff.
Do I get that deposit back?
Yes, yes. Give me every penny back I can get, please.
A word, a warning, because when my daughter finished up her rent, she got a check for the deposit. When we got back here, they canceled the check. They put a stop to it. And apparently what happens was he was employed by the college, so the college won't do anything. I don't know how often he pulled that stuff.
Oh. Well, that would suck. Hopefully we don't have any issues and he just, you know, I'm just kind of at that point. I am just grateful I don't have to pay rent on the apartment anymore.
Are we ready to begin?
Yep.
Yeah, I haven't, Debbie, have you heard from Craig or Debbie McDonald? I mean Debbie's.
No, I haven't heard from either one of them.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started and.
Hey guys, they were actually on the other meeting that I was on, the one that was in the virtual packet. But they just may not have gotten the email yet.
Yeah. I just got a text from Craig.
Can you tell Craig to tell Debbie? You guys both check their emails?
Yeah, I was on the other one but didn't get let in, so I was just sitting there. So when you switched over, I was like, okay.
Alright. It is 6:04.
Grant, let's hold on so we can see if we can get these other two switched over because we're having competing virtual, hopefully no one from the public showed up.
No, they were supposed to, if they wanted to make contact, they had to let me know by five. By email. So it didn't matter which meeting they were going to, they still had to let me know by five. And no one did.
Okay, so Craig's heading over.
And do we, do we reach out to Debbie?
I did. I just sent her a message, but I haven't heard back.
Okay.
Oh, I think I did. Oh, wants to know if I can send her the link.
I already sent it to her.
What was that number again? What was that number Debbie?
Um, just a sec. I did send her an email and to her planning commission email. It's 762-838-677.
Okay. Okay, I think she's heading over. So hey Grant, maybe, maybe at the end of the meeting on commissioner comments, we can try to find out if everybody's getting, getting all their paychecks because it seems to be still a little bit screwed up for mine.
Yeah, because I, I haven't seen anything.
I know that, I know Patty said she was holding off on this last one until they got the whole, until they got all of the commissioners into the system. So she could run one, one check processing.
Okay, you have to exit out and Debbie sent us an email just a few minutes ago. Yes, with the link. Alright.
I was gonna say, how did Debbie beat Craig here?
Yeah. Craig just called me. He's backing out, going over to the email one.
And what about Debbie?
She's right there.
Oh, I'm just not seeing it.
I don't see her face, I see her initials.
Yeah.
I'm on my work laptop and it doesn't have a camera.
Hey, who's excited for Friday's weather?
What work laptop doesn't have a camera?
Yeah.
Smart ones. Especially when you work virtual most of the time.
That's crazy. I'm super excited about the weather. We have a girls weekend this weekend out on the peninsula, so I'm gonna be on the water all weekend. I'm excited.
Nice, cheers.
Well, that was frustrating.
There he is. Are we ready?
I guess so, finally.
It is 06:10 on April 29th, 2023. I'm gonna call the meeting of the planning commission to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chair Solomon?
Here.
Vice Chair Sarver?
Here, finally.
Commissioner Doll?
Here.
Mr. Hubler?
Here.
Mr. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Benyon?
Here.
Mr. Strauss Boyd?
Here.
City staff, planning and building supervisor Jason Sullivan?
Here.
Debbie McDonald, planning commission clerk here.
This time we take the poll for the next meeting, which is the 3rd of May. To have a show of hands of the people who can make it.
I'm raising my hand.
Okay, we have a call and we will meet next on the 3rd of May.
In person?
In person.
Still at the Justice Center or at the new building?
Justice Center.
Still the Justice Center.
Still the Justice Center.
It'll probably be June or early July, late June, early July before we get over here.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep. Approval of minutes. The chair will entertain the motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, motion has been made. Are there any additions, corrections, changes to the minutes?
I just noticed that Vice Chair Sarver was marked as being there and as marked being absent.
Oh, okay. I'll change, get that changed.
Nice trick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for not making that when I had a family emergency come up.
Any other changes, additions, corrections?
No.
Call the question with the change to the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Ours? The ayes have it. The minutes with corrections are approved. There is no public comments or concerns. No one signed in that I know of? Nope. No public hearing? Only continuing business. Allen York Park options with the recommendation. We have a recommendation in the packet. Jason, would you start us off?
Yep, just give me one. So we did prepare at the, kind of following our discussion with the consultants, a recommendation memo that basically summarized what proposals were presented to the planning commission and in the planning commission's recommendation to proceed, you know, to, to move forward with option three in the planning phase and with the requirements. I, I will admit, I stole a lot from Jessica Benyon's email. I would say it's pretty much verbatim and tweaking, so. I have to give credit where credit's due. So since I stole a lot from, from Commissioner Benyon's email and I did add the, the information that was discussed by Commissioner Doll about the traffic, or not traffic, but the lights, or not lights, the security cameras and then also kind of talking about instituting some sort of addressing parking in the surrounding area based on kind of some of the Commissioner Strauss Boyd's comments. And I, and I, Craig, Commissioner Sarver, I picked up your comments as well and they're kind of buried into part of that justification of why we should support option three as it related to traffic.
I think that's the first time anybody's ever taken my writing and used it. That's like my least good point about me, so thanks.
It raised the right points. I just kind of fluffed it along a little bit.
That's what's nice about this commission. We all kind of contribute to it.
Yeah.
So we've got that and tentatively it looks like option three, Jason?
Yeah, the only thing in here was after the memo was issued, Chair, Chair Solomon sent me an email regarding a adding something under the, under the, in addition to the restricted parking and security cameras, also to consider looking at adding a dark park on the old city hall site. Since that wasn't discussed, I didn't put it in the memo, plus the memo had already been released by that point. But if that's something the planning commission would like to add, what I'd recommend doing is making the motion to adopt the memo as prepared and once we do that, someone just make a motion to add a recommendation to include the dog park and then we can vote on that and then vote on the main motion, just so we can keep it clear.
So next up would be the motion itself, the recommendation?
Yeah, which is on the briefing page, on the briefing memo, there's a suggested motion.
Okay, I've, I've got it right here. I can.
Okay, Brad, go ahead.
Okay, I move that Allen York Park recommendation memo be transmitted to the city council.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions?
I had one question.
Yes.
Jason, the dog park is an addition. How, how does that affect the budget on it?
Right now, we don't even have a budget. This is, we're, we're in the, in the design phase, right? To, to talk about adding projects and what we would like to see in the future. Once we have the kind of final concept, then we'll talk about adding, we'll talk about what the costs are. And it may change based on that. Right now, just things that we want to kind of, as we progress to more final design, the things that we want included. And I can see, I'll just say, sorry Commissioner, I was gonna say, I think Vice Chair Sarver's cat is opposed to the dog park. It seems to be causing problems over there every time the dog park is mentioned, so.
He's a juvenile.
We don't know how it would affect costs because this is way early in the program.
Okay.
Craig, it has been discussed for a number of years that the dog park is in the planning and last time I checked, there supposedly was some budget money for it. Okay, Carrie, what you got?
So I have some questions. I know I missed that meeting, but we just had, we just started the Parks, Trails and Open Spaces Committee and just started the process of asking the public for their opinion on this stuff. So why are we moving forward with trying to push a park plan through that we don't even have all of the public's comments and ideas and all their questions finalized and presented to the Parks, Trails and Open Spaces Committee yet?
So this will, so how do I answer this? These options will get presented to the public later. The council, when we put together the contract for the parks, spaces and open space plan, wanted draft concepts of Allen York Park earlier in the process. So when the contract, when we put the scope of work together, it was always envisioned that the Allen York Park, there would be kind of some pre-design work looking at the future of Allen York Park, giving all of the issues that were, they're occurring out there. The final adoption of those concepts won't be done until we do the Parks, Trails and Open Space Plan and this is part of that. So it's the same consultants, we're just advancing the options a little quicker because that's what the council wanted us to do when we put the contract together. But the options will go out to the public with all the other options later. The council just wanted to see options on this one earlier in the process.
So what is their reason for wanting, like, I, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding and not understanding, why do they want to see things so early on if the public hasn't made?
I, I, I can't, Commissioner Hubler, I can't speak to what, why the council wanted, what the council wanted. So what I can say is these options will be presented out to the public as part of the public outreach as well. The council just wanted an early discussion to occur on there because there's decisions that are getting made related to Allen York Park. With the opening of the ball field, with the boat trailer parking, they wanted us to come back earlier in the process with some options that could be refined through the public engagement process.
And with those options, we seem to have picked the best one and then we can build on that one.
Yeah, and they're not gonna be voting to approve this and make it the official plan. This is just because of the complexities out there, the initial discussion to inform those later discussions that will occur over the summer. We're still gathering information and things may change. Why the council wanted an early read, I can't speak to that. All I can say is this is kind of what, when we put the RFP in the contract together and the scope of work was the way it was laid out. It's not to take anything from the public or not to, they're not gonna approve this and say this is the plan tomorrow. They're just getting a presentation with no motion or no request for action. It's just, it's informational of where we're seeing the future go, because I think it's a much more complicated issue in Allen York Park as, as compared to Midtown Park because Midtown Park is a clean slate. So, and the same with Victor Falls. So I think there might have just been, I think because of the challenges we've been having out there in the past, a desire to kind of get the ball rolling on that one a little quicker. I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Hubler.
Basically, it's a building block.
Yeah. I can't always speak to why councils want certain things. I can just speak to what we did and how we got there. But it's not to ta, as I, as I said, it's not to take anything away from the public engagement. It's to begin to identify strategies to address the problems that we already have out there. Right? Like even if you don't.
I mean, I like number three the better. After watching the whole presentation, I was like, oh, three is the much better choice and that's what we had talked about like in the, that committee meeting is like how to move that road. So I think that's an awesome choice and they did a fantastic job on that, so. Hopefully it will be a great option four later on, but that's what I was just kind of questioning, why it's being pushed forward already. So I understand that a little bit better now.
Yeah, I think it was, it was to try to address some of the known problems of the park. Regardless of how you want to see it developed in the future. Boat trailers, the road, those are just no matter what we do with Allen York Park, those are kind of challenging issues and then the, it will, over time, through the pub, through the process, through the survey, we'll get more information and then we'll have an open house where all these, all the options for all the parks will be presented and then there'll be more feedback from that as well. So it's, it's just one of the pieces in the, in the building blocks that we're moving forward with. It's not, it's not, we're not asking them to say this is it. We're just giving them a presentation. But we wanted to make the planning commission's feelings known as part of that presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So are we ready to make the motion?
The mo, the motion's been made and seconded.
And seconded, yeah.
It'll only be, if there's, there would be amendment to add the dark, the dog park language.
Yeah. So now is the time for the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, make it real fast. Back around 2010, the city council approved the demonstration dog park. And a group of volunteers went out and chose the least used park in the city and collected stuff out of the boneyard and with sweat, just volunteers built the dog park. But the understanding was it was a temporary one. And over the years, when we've talked about it, the discussion has been, put it over there by the senior center, by the old city hall and make it a permanent one. That's the main thing. It's a success, there's no doubt about it. Does anybody have an objection?
No. I think we need a, a, a great dog park, so I agree with you. Another one that you guys worked so hard on, it's the best that you can do over there and I think adding a really great one would be spectacular for our city.
And it, it's used, boy, is it used.
So do you need a recommend, or an amendment to be offered for that then, or is that just part of it?
As long as the second, the maker and the secondary agree with it, we can just incorporate it into the main motion. So I'd love to. Debbie, who made the main motion?
It was Brad.
Oh yeah, it was me.
Okay, so as long as Brad and, or Commissioner Doll and Commissioner Wilkins are okay with the amendment, we could just fold it into the main motion.
I'm okay with that.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the dog park added into the plan.
Okay, so it's, it's now part of the main motion.
Awesome.
Call the question. All those in favor of the motion with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Ours? The ayes have it. And this goes to the council about when?
Uh, well, they're gonna have a presentation next week from the, the consultants on the three options and we'll get council's feedback at that meeting as well. And then, as I said, then we'll start rolling through the public process.
So our recommendation will be put out just next Tuesday?
Uh, yeah, it's gonna go in the council. Uh, yeah, it's gonna go in the council packet tonight, um, and it'll be part of the packet and part of the presentation.
And didn't you want Grant at that meeting, Jason?
Yeah. If, if the chair could be there just in case questions come up on the planning commissions, uh, planning commission side, that would be great.
Yeah. That was planned. We were invited. That recommendation has been made. New business is none. Before they go to the order, correspondence.
None.
Staff comments?
Uh, I just have, I think one, maybe two. Uh, May seventeenth, there will also be a planning commission meeting. Um, we'll be doing a public hearing on the SEPA code update on May seventeenth. So that would be a special meeting, uh, on, on, on that night, um, for that. Um, we so, yeah, that, I guess that's the only one I have. I can't think of anything else. Sorry, it's been a little bit of a frantic day trying to trying to get four or five council packets ready at the same time, so, uh, my mind's a little scrambled.
Uh, commissioner comments, uh, couple of us did not get the paychecks. I, I don't think I got any from March.
So.
I honestly don't pay attention because I forget that we get paid to do these meetings, so I will have to go back through and help look for that. I don't honestly know.
So I, I do know, I talked with Patty over in finance, and I do know that they were waiting to run the checks until they had all of the commissioners into the Eden system, and I believe they were working with Commissioner Wilkins to get him all processed, and once that's done, then they'll run the checks for the whole commission.
And then there was, there was also an issue with the time sheet for March. Somehow it ended up over there instead of up to Patty, and I don't know how that ended up happening. I come over there and someone hands it to me, here, this came to us when it was from me, so I don't know why they ended up with it. So, yeah, so it was floating around the city before it finally got to Patty, so, and then, yeah, they are getting the rest of the commissioner information in, to get paid.
I'm pretty sure we're owed for the March meeting and for the joint meeting.
Yes.
At this point.
Yeah.
And, and the, and the check that we got last, uh, last week said it was for the April meeting, but maybe it wasn't because Jeff Wilkins never got paid either.
Yeah, I, I would say if you have questions, I'd reach out to HR or Patty. I, that's about all I know. I did let Patty know you guys should be paid for the joint meeting, um.
And she got the time sheet.
And she got the time sheet, and I know she did say that they were holding off on doing it until they got everybody's into the Eden system.
Yeah. Make sure that he, she finds out how much everybody's supposed to be paid and get the checks issued.
Yes.
Any other commissioner comments? Motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
There's a second, Craig?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Have a safe drive, Carrie.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Yeah, good night.
Bye, y'all.
Bye.
And we're, oh. Next meeting, we have a little social gathering issue to have to finish up. But everybody took off, so we're good. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
We'll see you then.
I'll see you.
Bye.